6:04 PM, I call this meeting of the Godly Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present and that this meeting's been duly called and that notice of this meeting's been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. At this time, we'll have, I believe, our jazz band lead us in the pledge. We'll now ask Mr. McFarland to lead us in the invocation.
Let's pray together. Our holy Father in heaven, we come to you so grateful and for your love and for your protection, for your power. Father, we know that all things come from you. Father, we're grateful for this great community that we can be a part of. We're grateful that we can be a part of this great district. Father, we ask you just to bless each and every one that's here tonight. May our thoughts and our ideas be for the well-being of our students, goddess in all that we do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Dennis. Next, we'll move into recognition, and we have the Godly ISD State Jazz Band.
Yeah, good morning, Board. So, you know, all of our students, they do a lot of great things, a lot of great different avenues, and we have a lot of great adults that work with them all the time to make that happen. The one tonight is Mr. David Kennedy. I'm going to let him come to the mic and describe what this jazz band did, but Mr. Kennedy is one of our band directors here at the high school. He oversees the jazz group specifically. He opened that program, I think, four years ago and has run it since, and we have seen great growth from these kids in the jazz program. So, without further ado, Mr. Kennedy.
The students before you are Julia Roy, Eliana Villa, Cooper Holshauser, and then one not here tonight is Hunter Harden. They commited in the jazz region audition process, and band kind of does things a little different than athletics. For some reason, we go region, area, then state, instead of area, region, state. So, these four individuals tonight, all placed first in the region, and then advanced to the area round, where they then went to do a recording, and then those recordings are then submitted to a single panel for a state-level audition. And then Julia Roy placed 14th out of 59 trumpet players. Eliana Villa placed 6 out of 18. Cooper was 4th out of 18, and Hunter was 13 out of 20. So, again, that was out of the entire state, who had advanced to essentially the state-level audition round. It's a pretty tight competition. Piano player, they only take one. Electric guitar is only one. The bass guitar is one. Then trumpet, they take five. So, we were all extremely, extremely close and couldn't be more proud of their hard work and their continued dedication to their craft. So, congratulations to them. So, you have Cooper Holshauser, Julia Roy, and Eliana Villa, and then not here tonight is Hunter Harden.
Mrs. DePalma will be presenting the report this evening. And, Ms. DePalma, we're ready for you.
Good evening. I am Brandlyn DePalma. I'm the Chief Financial and Operations Officer for ESC Region 11, and I am helping out in the absence of a CFO here at Godly. So, I'm very happy to be presenting your school first rating, just as indicated. Your school first rating is your financial integrity rating system that TEA issues to every district and charter each year. One thing to point out that is important to notate is the 22-23 rating is based off of your last audited financial data from 21-22. With that, I'm very proud to share that, once again, Godly received a superior rating, so that is the highest rating available that a district can earn. Again, that's a superior rating, so congratulations on that. And with that, I'm going to kind of walk you through the packet that you received as far as all of the data and the indicators. In all, there are 20 indicators. You can receive a possible maximum score of 100 points, and Godly received 90. So, out of 20 indicators, you received the maximum points available. There was only one indicator in which you did not, and I'll touch on that in just a few moments. But, again, kudos to y'all, superior rating. So, with that, if you want to look in your packet, the first report just details all of the travel reimbursements that the school board and Dr. Dear received for any district-related Then, if you look at the next page, it details that Dr. Dear did not receive any type of compensation for any outside professional consulting services. In addition, it notates that there were not any executive officers or board members that received any type of compensation or gifts. The next page also shows that there were not any business transactions between school district members or board members. And then with that, we can take a look at the actual 20 indicators. So, again, this is based off of your last audited data from 21-22. You can see you had a past superior rating of an A, highest rating. You received a district score of 90. These 20 indicators, there's a combination of about half indicators that are yes or no, pass or fail indicator questions, and then the other half are all formulas based on certain ratios, looking at either your debt, your fund balance, how healthy is your fund balance, and all related to your audit. So, one of the most important things to notate, one of the first things that they ask, is all in relation to your audit. They want to ensure that you did receive an audit that was an unmodified opinion, which is good, and free of any material weaknesses and deficiencies. Godly passed all of that. They had an unmodified opinion, free of weaknesses and deficiencies. So, if we kind of take a look at these indicators, the first one is asking, in addition to that AFR, did you submit it on a timely basis? You have 30 days to submit that AFR after it's completed. Godly passed. The next one is asking, just kind of what I touched on, did Godly receive an unmodified opinion, which is very important, of course? Yes, you passed. The next one is looking at debt payments. Were you in compliance with all of your debt payments? Yes. Number four is looking at, did you make timely payments? So, timely payments is, did you make all of your payments within 30 days? Again, Godly passed there. Looking at indicator six, that's what's looking at your fund balances. Again, they're just trying to ensure that you're keeping a healthy fund balance and maintaining that. You passed that there. Looking at seven, it's looking at your cash on hand and your investments. You passed there. Indicator eight, looking at your current assets to current liabilities, looking at short-term debt. Godly passed, maximum points there. Indicator number nine, was your general fund revenues equal or did they exceed your expenditures in general fund? Full points there, 10 points. Indicator 11 is looking at long-term liabilities and total assets. Again, there, Godly got the full points, 10 points. Now, the next indicator, indicator 12, is the only indicator that you did not receive the maximum amount of points available. This indicator is looking at future, long-term debt and property values. So, one thing that I think is important to notate on this, I did some research, there's nine districts in the state that also only received a zero for this indicator. All nine of these districts are rural, fast-growth districts. So, you are one of the nine that just happened to be in a very fast-growth district for data purposes. You were one of the highest out of the nine. You had a 15.84% growth in property values that year. So, looking at your current data that we have, I project that probably within the next two years, you will get out of that zero point, and you'll start gaining points there. But the other nine districts that are very similar to your makeup, Aubrey ISD, Van Alstine ISD, Cato Mills ISD, Tioga, Melissa, Princeton, Wellman Union, Granger, and then Godly. So, it is nothing to be concerned of, and you will eventually move out of that and start receiving points in this indicator. And, again, it is the only indicator that you did not receive maximum points. So, then, moving on, number 13, was the school district's administrative cost ratio equal or less to the threshold? Again, that's just looking to make sure you're not top-heavy, per se. Got maximum points there. Moving on to indicator 16, it's looking at your PMS data, so all your PMS data that was uploaded in comparison to your AFR that you provided, that correlates and that there was not any misinformation there. Got full points there. Seventeen, again, looking at your AFR, was it free of material weaknesses? Passed there. Eighteen, did the external independent auditor indicate that the AFR was free of any instances of material noncompliances for grants and contracts? Got maximum points there at 10. Then 19, did the school district post required financial information? Full points there. And then, lastly, did the school district's administration and school board members discuss any changes and/or impact to local, state, and federal funding at a board meeting within 120 days? Passed there. So, in conclusion, superior rating, score of 90. And the last piece of data that was provided in that packet is just Dr. Dear's contract for that fiscal year, 21-22. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Question? We will now close the hearing on the district's annual first report and move into superintendent reports.
All right, we'll start with construction updates. Who wants to start us off? Reader?
All right, so, construction update for November for the Fine Arts Edition. Always start with this picture, overall site. We've got the topping slab poured on the storm shelter. We don't have any roof on the storm shelter yet, but the rest of the building is completely dried in. This is another view from the south elevation. All of our brick veneers up, and then you can see, I guess you guys can probably see a little bit better than I can, but we've got most of the RTUs up, and CL&amp;I and the art wing area is completely dried in with RTUs. Then, from the north elevation, a little bit of framing and sheathing to do back towards the storm shelter. That should be done in the next two weeks. And some interior photos. This is from the serving lines, looking out to the north. All of our framing's done, 90, 95% of our overhead's done. We should start ceiling grid and ceiling framing this week, and we've got sheet rock going up on the walls. This is the view looking from, sorry, I can't really see that from here. Okay, no, this is the view looking from the temporary wall we've got looking out. And, again, you can see framing, sheet rock. And this is looking back towards the kitchen and serving area. Again, all the framing's up, and this was around lunch today, and I think we've got probably 50% of the sheet rock up by the end of the day-to-day, so they're moving along pretty well. And this is the art rooms. We've got all the framing done. We've got our in-wall inspections passed, so we're going to start covering those up And this is the storm shelter. Started CMU on the north half of the storm shelter last Wednesday, and then continued today, and they're up about 12-foot on half of one of the bays, so CMU's progressing along very nice. And then, this is the other half of the storm shelter that we just poured last Tuesday, and we've got to give the concrete a little bit of time before we start putting equipment and start going vertical with CMU. Expect all the CMU and the storm shelter to be done in the next three weeks. We've got, in the other area, we've got kitchen equipment that's going to come in, not next week, but the next. Flooring, tape, bed texture, paint's supposed to start this Wednesday, so everything's progressing along pretty well. And that is the end of the presentation. Any questions?
Sorry about the delay there. So, what is your projected substantial completion date?
Still, January 24th of next year. We're pushing to get the kitchen area, the CL&amp;I, and the art rooms by January 10th.
Okay, thank you. And then, I know you and I spoke a little bit earlier, but I'm going to re-ask that question-
Yes, sir.
-for the benefit of everybody else. So, in prior constructions, we had significant delays in getting different types of equipment, electrical equipment, or whatever. So, are we experiencing any delays, and if so, what are we doing to mitigate those?
Yeah, we've got, I think, almost all of our equipment is on-site. The one thing that we weren't able to get on time is the main switch, the main electrical switch. It's a 2,000-amp switch. It's sized to serve a future addition. The addition we're building only needs 800 amps, so we, I guess, somebody came up with a new business model to rent temporary electrical gear, so renting an 800-amp switch to serve the new addition until the permanent one comes in in March. As of right now, last I heard, it's supposed to ship early March. We're hoping it ships in time to do that swap-out over spring break.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Okay, thank you, sir. S&amp;P?
All right, going through the November update for the wild and the arena. You can see here, this is looking from the southwest side of the wild. You can see we poured the second portion of concrete on the south side around the softball bathrooms right there. We intend to continue around. We're doing the dirt work in the area just south of it with the intention of pouring that in the next coming weeks. You can also see from this, and you'll see it in a further picture, the turf is all pulled up there, as well as an additional crane that will be really displayed here. This is from the 50-yard line, looking at the east face of the CTE. You can see we have all the precast. This is actually an older picture, there's still five pieces there, but all the precast has since been set at the top portion there, so all the bleacher section is completed. They're doing some final grouting of the pouches there, and they'll come out and start doing the bleachers here, probably in the next month, and start wrapping that up. You can also see here, we have all the penthouse glass in, and once that crane gets out of the way, we'll start wrapping up the metal panels on this side and really start making a big difference there on the finishes. And you can see, again, right here, the entire turf has been pulled up, exposing the subgrade. Once the crane is out of the way, we'll pull up those mats and start the rework of the track surface there. You'll see on the south, or the east side of the track, we've actually already started some of the rework of the curb and the digging of the sidewalk that goes around the track. This is, again, the northeast corner of the CTE. This is showing the metal panels. We have the rest of the metal panels arriving the second week of December, which will close in those gaps you see there with the accent color, completing the exterior finish here. A little bit of dirt that's exposed here, we have the ballards on-site, and we are forming that up, getting ready to pour that the second week of December. That'll be the entire sidewalk portion there, going all the way down to the south side. This is inside the wild. You can see we have finishes going on in the bathroom, as well as down the corridor. On the right picture here, you'll see the installed main switchgear. This is great news. It's actually up and energized, so we're currently have permanent power in the CTE. Good news, we've got it turned on, so we'll be slowly removing the temporary power and make that switch over, but that's installed for use and energized by Encore. That also brings us over, over the break, you'll see here, this is the arena. We've actually performed a shutdown over the Thanksgiving break and pulled permanent power into the arena as well. So, currently, both facilities have permanent power, and their main switch is installed and energized, which is right on time and right where we need to be. This is looking inside the arena. One huge difference you can see here is, on the left picture, we actually have the scoreboard installed, as well as the basketball goals around it. You can still see our dance floor on the higher portions. We're wrapping up the fur-down steel and framing that wraps the center of the arena and getting ready to drywall that all up, so we can pull that out and continue with finishes. As of right now, the stadium, the arena floor is to be here, the beginning of January, to climatize. You can also see we're installing the storefront, which you'll also be able to see out there on the east side, on the first floor, and we'll be starting on the second floor in this coming week. This is Section F, which is the visitor's side. This is, you can see, we have all the concrete poured with the steel. We have a crane out there right now, setting the steel beams, and that will continue on till the end of next week, setting the horizontal beams on those concrete cast in place. Any questions?
Similar question. What is your current projected substantial completion date, both for the CTE and for the arena?
The CTE, right now, is tracking for February 22nd of '24, and the arena is April 29th, '24.
And are you experiencing with any equipment similar to what Reader is experiencing?
No, thankfully, all our mechanical equipment's already on-site, installed and in place, and obviously, the main one that most companies have been having issues with is the switchgear, and we have that installed now and energized, so the major delays over materials have been pretty much reconciled.
Yeah, we'll see that, and we're going to wait them for, we'll let them talk with Aubrey at the end. Okay, now, we'll move into Seabass signaling.
All right, good evening. We're glad to come back and update you all with our signaling following Quarter 1. I have each of you, I want to bring these to you. So, just as a reminder, there are seven pillars, and just as we built this from the beginning, we built it in pieces rather than going for the whole thing at one time, and we believe that provided a great benefit to us. So, over the course of the year, we will bring you pieces of our signaling chart. And so, tonight, following Quarter 1, we wanted to give you an update on student learning and progress and community engagement and partnerships. And then, over the course of the year, we will continue to bring you this, give you our signaling on how we're doing on things, if we're on track, if we're needing to make an adjustment. We will always bring you Pillar 1, Student Learning and Progress, and then, after each quarter, we will bring you additional pillars before August, at which time, we'll have our second annual publication of our community report. So, on the packet that I just handed you, there is the district signaling chart, which takes each campus and puts it onto one page, so that we have a view of what's happening throughout the district. So, what I want to do now, though, is bring the people that are doing the difficult work and working on each of our campuses, and let them present to you what they're doing on each of their campuses. And so, we'll start with youngest to oldest, talking about kids, not principals. So, principals, if y'all wouldn't mind coming and sharing with the board Pillars 1 and 4.
Amy Hill, reporting for Legacy. I wanted to say that, just some notes on what we're on track. You see that we're on track on Pillar 1.2, Explore Content at a Deeper Level. We are doing that through our PLCs, our data digs within the TECs, how they align vertically, how they align horizontally, and then, we are still growing in the world of ARC, American Rating Company. We are on track for 1.3 as well, which is Learning Aligned to Student Needs. We do that through small-group instructions, meeting the students where they are and growing them, where they need to be grown, in the form of small group with a program and platform of progress learning, and then, data that we receive from MAP and our CBAs to help drive instruction where the needs are for our students. As far as community engagement and partnership, we are on track in 4.1, if our community is partners. We have experiences in the classroom, community helpers coming in, the senior projects coming in. We have Ag Day by one of our seniors coming very soon to Legacy. And in 4.2, we are also on track as parents as partners with increasing our volunteers. We had an opportunity just recently with Legacy Reads, where we had some parent volunteers come in and take time reading with the kids, and it was a lot of fun. They dressed up. It was on Halloween. And then, our PTO is thriving at Legacy, so I'm very excited. Any questions?
Yes, Ms. Hill.
Yes, sir.
So, in relation to 4.1, Community as Partners, Legacy is making a change, and you're on track for it, but the changes you're making, how does that align with the other elementaries? I see they're not making changes, or maybe they're considering a change. So, help me understand how this keeps the elementaries aligned.
I'll let them help answer that, too. I don't want to speak for them.
Hi, so, at RB, you'll see that we've addressed your question in 4.3. We have made a change there. I'm just addressing it through that line. We brought in our house system, where we are doing community service projects monthly, and this is to help the students understand that they are part of a community and that they are partners in the community. So, that's kind of where we're addressing at RB. It may look a little different than what Ms. Hill is doing, but we are also bringing in volunteer- in volunteers, asking people to read with our students, and our PTO is also up and thriving as well.
I think part of the reason why they're not all exactly the same doesn't mean we're not all focusing on those. It's just where we're putting a little more of our attention based on our population of students, or when we split up, there might have already been a, a core of parents that were at one campus where the other needed to build their PTO or those kinds of things up. So I don't think that it, this necessarily shows that we're not in alignment. It just shows where we knew we needed a little extra charge at our particular campus, so that we did keep that consistency among the campuses in terms of, I know the other two campuses, for example, one of mine in the area, excuse me, in the area of four, they already had clubs going at their campuses, but by nature, with my campus being all over this time last year, we didn't really get that up and going. So that was an area that's my focus this year, so that I could get back on track with them. So I think that's where you might see that will differ in a few areas. I know we're not talking about one of the other pillars, but for example, they're working on collaboration spaces, but by nature of my campus, that wasn't a focus. So it's just some of those kinds of things that we're trying to plug in to keep us, you know, as consistent as possible, but not that we're, you know, going off in a different path or anything. Hopefully, that kind of answers that question. And so to speak to my campus in the area of student readiness, engagement, that's, that is an area I think that we're all focusing on, continuing with our American reading, and then pulling in our math. I've been very excited that this year, through our curriculum and instruction department, we've had some great planning days on our PD days, and our teachers all get together by content and by subject across all three elementaries, and they've been planning together to kind of do what you're saying, to make sure we are mapping and keeping our curriculum-based assessments are the same. That way, we're all giving the same assessment, so that we can gauge our progress through that. So I, I think it's, I think it's just those little bit of tweaks in why some of us might be a green instead of a yellow or a purple, but none of us are like a red and a purple. That's when I would, you know, if somebody's really making a big, huge change and somebody thinks they're selling cross, then, then that might be a, a one we need to talk about. But hopefully, that answers your question.
Okay, and then I just wanted to finish up with telling about my student learning and progress. So 1.1, we are staying at just maintain. 1.2, we are focusing on, as I talked about last time, our small group instruction and our PLC time together, which I addressed more in 1.3. I did go ahead and go back to red for this first quarter, because we did make a big change in how we are addressing data and our PLCs, and I wanted to be sure that I signaled that to you all and to the community, so that they knew that was something that we were working on. We are still on track, but it was a big change in how we were running our PLC time, our professional learning communities. So we've been looking really at our curriculum-based assessments, our MAP testing, our M-class testing, and just recently, we brought onboard, looking at our walkthrough data with our teachers, to show them what we're seeing when we're coming into the classroom and opening up that dialogue about powerful moves that we can make next. So I wanted to be sure that you guys knew that that did go from yellow to red, and I'm anticipating to go back to yellow, but I don't want to jump the gun. I want to see how it goes with this quarter that we're in. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, good evening, Board. I once again have the joy of working with Mrs. Nguyen with the sixth grade campus and middle school being a joint campus. So we had a minor change that we consider to be on track. Both campuses have been able to provide teachers a common planning time. We also have our regularly scheduled PLC meetings for our teachers to be able to come together. We're working specifically with how to gather, analyze, and utilize student data to better provide instruction for students and tailor the instruction to students' needs. And speaking of that, we use a program called Progress Learning, which it talks to, the students take the MAP test, the Measure of Academic Progress test, they take that three times a year, and so this program, Progress Learning, talks to that program, and it tailors specific lessons and tutorials to the needs of those students. So during our homeroom time or before-school or after-school time, students are able to work on any, anything that they need based on the MAP test and the tutorials that that has given them. We also, as far as community engagement goes, we have started utilizing, as the whole district has, Parent Square, and that is going very, very well. I've heard phenomenal feedback from the community, from parents, from teachers, about how easy it is to use and how they're able to streamline their communication effectively, and, I mean, I get a weekly report, and Parent Square is being used. It is, it is definitely being used. So we're trying to keep the community engaged as much as possible. Questions for the sixth grade campus and middle school?
Good evening. So for the pillars one and two, for the high school as far as it stands, the first one, pillar one, one of the things we're working on in ways we're held accountable by TEA is on our results-driven accountability system. They track special populations of students, ELL, SPED, and those things. Some of those numbers have declined in the reading category for English one and two specifically on the EOC exam. So last year, our English teachers did a lot of work on open-ended response questions, how to pull text evidence, and how to systemize that, so kids could work on that. We saw great results this past year from the STAR testing, so we're still implementing that. So that was the biggest change we made in student learning and progress about learning basic academic skills. It was how to pull open-ended responses and use text evidence to support student justifications. We systemize that now, and it's across the four core content areas, math, science, social studies, and ELA, in freshman and sophomore years at the high school. So that's what they're working on right now. It did change from red to yellow, you can see, because we were on track, and the light sensor is only 20 feet in a 24-foot building, so that's why that light goes off, so we'll get it turned on. So we have good progress there. 1.4, we talked about our collaboration spaces and putting a little more structures in place of how students get out there and go back in and out and use them more fluidly, instead of just going out there to get away and not work, maybe get to hang out and just socialize. So we put a few things in last year. They seem to be working really well, so we're still tracking those to see how those go. And then for four, Parents as Partners, it's Parent Square. Y'all know at the high school, there are tons of extracurriculars, and some of them are using whatever app or social media they wanted to use to send information, so it was really hard on parents to go to each different site to find the information. Now on Parent Square, it's in one stop, and so parents can get all the information for all the clubs or activities their children are in. I love it as a parent, you know, three kids across basketball to band, to FFA, to whatever, middle school, high school, it is so easy to navigate. Oh, where's that one search I'm looking for? And I can hone it in. So that's been our biggest piece with the parents, is Parent Square. Every extracurricular is onboard and using it, so it's, it's been successful as of now. So there is one and four. Any questions for the high school? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Question for you. Nice try to get away there.
So close.
So, help me understand, in that area of 4.2, Parents as Partners.
Yes, sir.
That we, as the end of the summer, we consider ourselves green, and we now are considering ourselves yellow. I realize it's a minor change. I'm probably nitpicking on a small thing, but it's, there's something that triggered you to go from green to yellow, so help me understand.
Yeah, that, that was Parent Square. You know, green is watch it, consider a change. It's not perfect the way we want it, but it's where we want it, we might want to change it. The district initiated Parent Square, is that the entire district would do it, so the high school got onboard with, yeah, all our coaches, get onboard Parent Square, this is what we're doing. So we changed, because the district was changing to get onboard with everything else.
Thank you.
You got it.
Do we have anything? You already covered the district stuff? All right? Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay, thank you.
That's the end of superintendent reports.
All right.
At this time, we extend the opportunity for the public participation portion of this meeting in compliance with Section 551.007 of the Texas Government Code. I believe we have approximately 10 people wishing to address the board tonight. Public participation provides the general public the opportunity to address the board regarding topics listed on the agenda. Persons attending the meeting and wishing to participate in a public forum must complete a sign-up form and submit the form to the board secretary or designate 10 minutes prior to the meeting being convened. Each individual addressing the board will have three minutes to make their presentation. Personal attacks on district employees or students will not be allowed. All participants are expected to speak with respect and civility and maintain a calm, professional demeanor. Upon expiration of the three minutes, I will call the next person that signed up to speak. Please note, the Texas Open Meetings Act does not require the board to respond to any comments or complaints from a member of the public regarding an agenda item. We will now begin public forum. And first, we have Nova Olson. Ms. Goodlow will keep your time, and she will notify when you have one minute remaining.
We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that to secure these rights, governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. You claim you value community input and are committed to providing access to school board meetings, but repeatedly demonstrate a lack of transparency by not providing your stakeholders with any documentation of potential revisions that would dramatically alter our ability to provide input. That is unprofessional at best, tyrannical, and deceitful at worst. Considering such revisions include verbiage defining disruptions that include acting in an unprofessional manner, audible utterances, other frequent or flagrant deceptive behaviors, these are incredibly subjective. Who is making the decisions whether, for an example, an audible utterance would include a heavy sigh? As a godly ISD leader accused me of on social media of doing at board meetings, this sets an incredibly dangerous precedent. Your BED legal policy quotes our U.S. Constitution, which protects freedom of speech, the Texas Constitution, which says, "Apply to those invested with the powers of government for redress of grievances or other purposes by petition, or address, or remonstrance," which I will remind this board, the definition of remonstrance is a forcefully reproachful And public criticism, which says, "A board may not prohibit public criticism of the board, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service." Number seven of your agenda states, per HB 2840, and your BED local policy states, "At other times during a board meeting, the audience shall not enter into discussion or debate on matters being considered." But your policy conveniently leaves out the rest of HB 2840, which states, quote, "Or during the body's consideration of the item." You attempt to usurp the rights we have by continually seeking to change local policy to fit your agenda.
30 seconds.
You are creating the polarized divisive climate, not the stakeholders attending the meetings who demonstrate dissent. Board members, do not forget, you are voted into the position you have. You work for the stakeholders. You can be voted in, and you can be voted out. More importantly, as a duly elected board member, you have a responsibility to uphold the U.S. and Texas Constitution, and therefore, the rights they afford your stakeholders.
Next, we have Holly Clemmons.
My name is Holly Clemmons, and I am speaking on 8E. So I was looking over what was provided to me, and you got three pages is what you gave the public, and your agenda was almost 1,300 pages long. That's how much you hid from the public. And it starts with facilitating a safe and transparent environment at the school board meetings. Wouldn't it be transparent to provide the public with your board book? I get that in Fort Worth ISD, they have no trouble doing that. Why don't you guys consider that? I've talked about it once before, I filed a grievance. Maybe you should consider that. Then we're going to talk about the complete and utter trampling of the First Amendment. Do you guys even, like, care about the Constitution? Do you read it? Do you know what it says? In here, you have "safe" written five times. When has there ever been anything that hasn't been safe at this board meeting? He is trampling 1A under the guise of safety, which is the same thing that brought in the TSA under the Patriot Act. This is very, very, very dangerous. In reading through this, you, and you value community stakeholder input. No, you don't. All community attendees shall sign in when entering the meeting. Well, your board attorney, Lisa and Crass, on April 3rd, 2023, this has been provided to the administration board. You guys didn't get it, because they denied my level three, because they don't want you guys to hear the truth of what happened when they had to send me in a letter and apologize to me, because they gave me a trespass for doing absolutely nothing. I said Gestapo, and it hurt Furor Dear's feelings, so he tried to trespass me. So it says right here, in, like, Lisa and Crass, "In some districts, individuals who sign up for public comment are asked to provide contact information and/or to indicate whether they are parents, students enrolled in the district. Asking individuals to provide this information voluntarily is allowed, but only if the information is not used to prevent speakers from addressing the board." This entire policy change, I know you did it because of me and Mary Lowe. I know you did. I read it, and it's all about us, because you don't like that we come here and we tell you the truth. The public is scared for you, for them to come forward, because you retaliate. Look, you're retaliating tonight against me and Mary for what we come here and tell you. You do retaliate, and you retaliate against your godly ISD taxpayers, and they come to us.
Ms. Clemmons, your time is now up.
I have eight seconds left. They come to us and tell us.
You have three minutes to talk. You're now interrupting a public meeting, and you're receiving a warning for that.
I timed it. You know what? I'll go into your board recording, and I'll time it, and I'll file another grievance, and I'll use your own board video to file that grievance. Okay?
Next, we have Georgia Head.
My name's Georgia Head, and I'm a resident of Johnson County. I want to talk about your potential policy change of not allowing those that you consider outsiders to attend and speak at your board meetings. I hope you realize that godly ISD is a government entity. Our country was founded on principles of transparent government and free speech. It appears that your board wishes to consider doing away with both. I hope that each of you will ask yourself why you do not want a transparent board, and why you do not wish for your community and neighbors to have freedom of speech. This is an extremely serious matter. Also, tonight, you'll be taking a vote on members of the Central Appraisal District Board. Did you know that how you vote on this matter has the ability to affect each and every single resident of this entire county? Why would you want to even consider silencing some of their voices? This is very, very serious. I'm asking each of you to please consider the wide-reaching effects of your votes on changes to your policy. Thank you for your time.
Next, we have Mary Lowe. Your three minutes will begin now.
Thank you, Board. I think there must be some confusion that we don't have better things to do with our time than to come here and to speak to you all. I have come at times other than a I have come at times other than a board meeting because there have been issues happening in godly ISD that have been so important to the safety of children that we have tried to speak with board members privately so that they could take the issues to Dr. Dear, and were unsuccessful, and we have tried to speak to Dr. Dear, to the extent that he said, "I don't want to speak to them." I run an organization, we operate throughout the state of Texas, and our goal is to improve relationships in the community and to create stronger relationships with ISDs. Independent school districts are under attack by the state. The state would love to do away with you and replace you with a private school or charter school. Fundamental, and you were continuing to operate, is the transparency and the adherence to public free speech. In your District 11, there are only four schools that restrict speech to speak on any topic, and you're one of them. Seventy-one other school districts will let someone come and address them on any issue that they feel concerning to the community's safety. When this is more important than the safety of your students, to do proper screening so that a convicted prostitute has access and serves on a shack committee, a dad committee, and is teaching, cheerleading to young girls using the school address as the address of her business, you have a safety issue within your school, not in these meetings, and not by outsiders coming and speaking. Now then, you have a $10,000 expense report from Dr. Dear. That comes, I don't know if he's concealing something, but I think that that needs to be transparent. Exactly what is the $10,000 expense report? When all of you have expense reports that don't come close to that, you have got to stop the fiscal irresponsibility and the abuse of the taxpayer. You are 47% funded by out-of-district taxes. Please don't tell me I'm not a stakeholder or a taxpayer in your school district.
Thirty seconds.
My school contributes very heavily to your school district, so my taxes come here. So I don't want that used as an excuse. I want to see godly survive and lead, but you won't do it if you're not being transparent, and if you don't have someone who wants to embrace criticism and suggestions to improve a school district, to protect children.
Next, we have Andrea Cooper. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Cooper, and I'm speaking on Item 8E regarding revision to the board's meeting regulations. The verbiage included in this is very concerning, as it is subjective, open for interpretation, and is not well-defined. The verbiage refers to today's politically charged, polarized, and divisive climate, and that the students in the school district should not be politicized or used to advance radical agendas. Will this subjective verbiage be open to interpretation and subject to change at your political whim, or when you want to continue to silence voices that bring up different viewpoints? A few years ago, godly ISD would have said the ability to encourage children to choose a gender other than how God created them would be a radical agenda. But recently, in eighth grade, your character leadership development curriculum provided a worksheet that specifically asked children to choose new attributes, and gender was highlighted as one that students could choose. Some define that as radical; godly ISD for eighth graders did not. Thankfully, it's been pulled. The verbiage proposed and the subjective, or is subjective to the point that it can be weaponized to limit free speech, more so than it already is with other godly ISD policy overreach. In addition, this policy specifically defines stakeholders and eliminates those who do not live within the godly ISD from that definition. Others have spoke about where your half, over half of your budget comes from, they're outside of the godly district, so please respect that. You speak about stakeholders and clearly define them by excluding the majority of those that provide funding for your district because your overspending exceeds more than the godly community can provide. Without recapture, otherwise known as Robin Hood, your funding would be half of what you spend. This policy cites Government Code 551.023, which explains the general provisions for open meetings, and states it cannot impair a person from exercising rights granted under that code. The word "public" appears 143 times; the word "stakeholder" appears zero times. Yet, you're using stakeholder to eliminate the majority of the public from being welcomed and speaking in your open meetings. I encourage you to read BED Legal, which Nova had already talked upon. This ISD has a history of trying to silence voices. I urge the ISD to welcome all viewpoints, engage in debate, and then determine the best course of action forward on various topics. All citizens have a vested interest in the welfare of children regardless of district boundaries. My family spent a lot of time in godly. We were previous residents. I am tired of being told which children I should care about.
Next, we have Jen Thompson. Your three minutes will begin now.
Good evening, Board. I'm Jennifer Thompson, a godly ISD taxpayer, taxpayer, not a stakeholder. I'm speaking on 8E, the new board policy change to be legal, otherwise known as the trampling of the First Amendment in the godly ISD. I find it deplorable that limiting freedom of speech is in the same document where it titles the page that the policy change is in an effort for more transparency. Members of the board, I'm imploring you all to stand up for the public, the taxpayers, all of the taxpayers, local, state, and federal. Vote no. Terry Goodlow, I know that you enjoy your freedom to speak. As you've shown up to city council meetings many, many times, you have belittled many sitting council members, past and present. Imagine if that was taken away from you. If I do not see you vote no on this item, I will then confirm the hypocrisy you instill in the school board. Someone without their own voice, but someone without their own voice, and someone that will agree to whatever everyone else wants. Taking the voices away from the public, even the thought of it is appalling, appalling. This behavior must stop. Kayla Lane, thank you for being the voice of the taxpayers and not the superintendent. I would like to see some of you follow her lead. This is a time for you to make that happen. I will leave you with the language from the Bill of Rights, the First Amendment, to ponder and consider before you make this very important and historic vote. Congress shall make no respecting an establishment, or make no law respecting establishment of religion, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech, or of the press, or the right of the people receivable to assemble and to petition the government for the redress of grievances. Thank you.
Next, we have Amy Super.
Your three minutes will begin now. Thank you. I'm also speaking to 8E. I'm a proud taxpaying citizen of this country residing in the greatest of our states, in which I own property, for which I pay a substantial amount of property taxes and a variety of other taxes on just about everything I purchase or use. That makes me, and everyone like me, a stakeholder in almost every decision you make while acting in your positions within godly ISD. Your district is not just funded by taxes from local godly ISD residents and business owners. You receive millions in state and federal funds, which I contribute to. We live in a time when common words are being redefined to suit the ideology of whomever would attempt to redefine that which has been commonly understood. The definition of stakeholder is the following: a person with an interest or concern in something. I am deeply concerned about public education. I'm a product of public education. Our children both graduated from public schools and Texas public universities. My daughter and my daughter-in-law are both teachers. I strongly support the importance of quality of public education. It provides the important part of the foundation that allows our great country to thrive on very many levels. While Texas has independent public school districts, the decisions made by those both employed and elected to administer the educational needs of its community's students do not impact only the individuals who reside within your district or own businesses within your district, because if you, as administrators and school board trustees, make decisions that cause your schools to fail to produce students who receive an education which allows them to become productive, self-sustaining members of society, we all pay, literally, with our tax dollars, as individuals who are not capable of taking care of themselves will in due turn to the government for assistance. To be clear, I'm not paid or compensated in any way to speak at any public meeting that allows public comments. There is this neat thing now called the Internet. Individuals often turn to social media groups when they are concerned about an issue or feel as if others should be concerned, were they made aware of specific issues or decisions being concerned or being considered. If I've taken the most precious thing I have, my time, to attend and prepare to make a public comment, it's because I have been made aware, almost always by someone in your community I'm visiting, about a concern or issue which they have either been unsuccessful in resolving, or is an issue being considered about which I, once again, as a stakeholder, have a concern about. I implore you to not limit those who wish to allow the opportunity to publicly address any concerns related to your ISD to just those who reside or have businesses in your ISD. As I mentioned, my time is the most precious thing to me. I don't travel across the state speaking at just any public meeting for the sake of any personal gain. I can count on my hand, one hand, school board meetings, public meetings that I've been to outside of my own. I've never been to one of your meetings before, but I'm here tonight because this issue is important, and I ask you not to limit public comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Craig Hundley.
Your three minutes will begin now. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Craig Hundley. I've lived in Johnson County all my life and have been working for the past four and a half years to reform a broken property tax system in Austin and locally. Folks, we desperately need citizen candidates on the Central Appraisal District Board of Directors who represent us, the taxpayer. Just everyday, hard-working folks who look out for the property owner. The citizen candidates we recommend you to support are Paul Jones and Mr. Dwayne Golding, who are here tonight. Our other two nominee members, Mr. John Woods and Amy Lingo, have already been seated with overwhelming majorities, the first time in history. I believe that you will find these two individuals, who have willingly volunteered to serve in this capacity, to be highly qualified and able to provide excellent representation to the taxpaying citizens of Johnson County while being sensitive to the needs and requirements of the taxing entities. Before our candidates step up to introduce themselves to you, I'd like to assure you that the members of our group are not anti-tax zealots. We fully understand and support the need to collect tax dollars to port the services that cities, counties, and ISDs provide. We simply want taxation to be fairly applied and property values to be fairly accessed. Our goal is to ensure transparency to the property owner and the taxpayers of Johnson County. The entities that have supported our citizen candidates so far are Johnson County's Commissioners' Court, the cities of Alvarada, Burleson, Cleburne, Godly, Grandview, Joshua, Mansfield, Alvarada ISD, Joshua ISD, Grandview ISD, and Rio Vista ISD. The taxpayers of Johnson County are begging for your support, and that's why we're here. The incumbents have not campaigned one single time and are not here because they feel the broken system protects them. Please vote for change. Thank you.
Thank you. Your three minutes will begin now.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. I appreciate the time. As Craig mentioned, taxpayers are not confident in the policies, processes, and practices carried out at the Central Appraisal District. Nobody can trust a secret process, and by secret, I don't mean something insidious or intentional. Just nobody knows. It's a mystery. Taxpayers can't know if they're getting a fair shake because they don't know what the system is. They don't understand how it works. And if they understand it, maybe they're getting a fair shake and they don't know it. The state mandates a lot of what the CAD does. What they don't mandate is transparency, and that's what I'm focused on. I think it's time to shine a light on the policies, processes, and practices of the CAD, and I think only a new board can do that. If the old board was going to do it, they would have done it already, and they haven't. They've made no effort to. So your choice tonight's pretty simple. You can vote to maintain the status quo, as it has been for decades, with a handpicked board, and will continue as we have in the past, or you can vote for a transparent CAD, where the practices, policies, and processes are shared with the taxpayers. Now, my vision of the transparency is an outreach program, the first thing of which would be a presentation available to any and all taxpayers that would explain the policies and the processes and the practices of the CAD. Inform taxpayers have a better chance of knowing if they're getting a fair shake. They have a better chance if they want to challenge their appraisal, and I think that's only fair. So I'm asking for your vote for the CAD Board of Directors. If you don't have any questions, I'll sit down and shut up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your three minutes begins now. Good evening. I hope you're all doing well this evening. Rather than sit up here and just repeat what Dwayne said, we both believe in the same thing when it comes to the Central Appraisal District Board, which is we need a lot more transparency and a lot more understanding for the public of just what that means, the Central Appraisal District Board, and what they do. I'm all for transparency. I'm all for taxation. We need it, as stated before by Dwayne and by Craig, but a lot of the taxation is driving people out of their homes these days. The over-assessed values of the homes in Johnson County is reaching a point of no return where the average person cannot afford to buy a home anymore simply because of the taxes. I'm sure everybody in this room probably knows somebody who's had to give up their home because they can't afford the taxes. I know there are a lot of people who can't buy a home because they can't afford the taxes. So, I'm not going to hammer that point much longer, but I'd like to say, what I would like to do is reiterate what Dwayne said about which entities are supporting us. City of Alvarada, City of Burleson, City of Cleburne, City of Godley, City of Grandview, City of Joshua. City of Godley, I would like to say, gave us all their votes. City of Mansfield, the school districts which have supported us so far are Alvarada, Granbury, Grandview, Joshua, Ria Vista, and Johnson County Commissioners' Court. It's also given us all their votes. Out of all these entities, 25 entities, 14 have given us their support, either all their votes or some, mostly all their votes. That leaves about nine or 10 entities, of which six have not voted yet, and that leaves three entities which did not vote with what the public wants, which is members elected by the board who will represent the average taxpayer, not the incumbents, which get elected over and over and over again, like it's just a rote. Anyway, thank you for your time. That's all I've got for now. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Of the three gentlemen that presented for the CAD, do y'all have a current count of votes of where you stand? Could you share that?
I have 434.
Dwayne, correct. 434?
434.
Okay.
I don't exactly know what I need to say. Before that, I was 434. That was bad. It was something left, 434. Plus this.
Okay. And Paul?
I have about a dozen votes. There's a quick number of candidates. And we go in front of these entities, these taxpayers, and they have to make choices that we have to make. But that ends up leading to people who have had enough votes, get all the rest of the votes, and give you the constituency. Those are people I'm quoting them. But there's total voting. So I'm just, and that's okay. Honesty, I'd like to see all of this.
All right, that concludes public participation. The time is now 7:15 PM, and before we move into business items, the board will take a short 10-minute recess. We will remain in open session. We'll just be in recess until 7:25 PM. The time is now 7:25 PM, and the board will reconvene out of recess. Next, we'll move into business items, and First 8A will consider the consent agenda items, which is minutes of regular meeting, October 25, 2023. District financial report, district tax report, district monthly investment and cash report, and adoption of the Godley ISD. District policy BBB local regarding board member election.
I would like to motion to pull 2 and 5 from the consent agenda for discussion.
Are there any objections? We can discuss them at this time if you'd like, and we can leave them in the consent agenda.
Okay.
Do you have any questions?
I have a question on number 2 in regards to the budget for the food service. On the food service budget, there is a balance remaining of negative $1.8 million. I wanted to make sure we have funds to cover that deficit for the food service budget. Can you hear me? There we go. That is actually comparing what you budgeted to what you have brought in thus far this year, so it is natural to see a deficit at this point because you are not through the entire year.
Thank you. And then regarding 8A5, the BBB local board member election, looking at the TASB legal updates that are on the agenda for tonight, the BBB legal is going to be updated, and it says that once you order the trustees to be numbered elections, neither the board nor their successors may rescind the action. I interpret that to mean if we go to places, we cannot go back to at-large. It also says in this newly adopted policy that before adopting an order, the board must hold a public hearing in which the public can comment on whether or not they favor the election of trustees in the manner proposed by the board. So voting on this policy tonight is circumventing the public's opportunity to attend a public hearing on this board member election policy and be able to provide their comment on that. So I would like to motion that we pull this and we table it for a future agenda in order to have a public hearing for the public to be able to provide their comments on this proposed board election policy.
Actually, it's already been approved. We approved it last month. This is just procedural, having it on the consent agenda right now.
The agenda for last month did not have consider, so we were actually not allowed to vote on that.
Well, that's why it's on here. It did have consider at the very top, so it's approved, but it's on here for that reason.
It didn't say consider. It said discuss possible, and it was voted on, so it could not have been approved. That's a violation of Toma, and so it is on the meeting tonight to be voted on.
Is there a second to table? Motion fails for lack?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. So 8A5 will be tabled to a future meeting. All right, we will vote to table. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Six to zero, we will table 8A5 to a future meeting.
Thank you.
We will now consider the consent agenda items, 8A1, 2, 3, and 4.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items, 1, 2, 3, and 4.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Oh, sorry, I had one thing on that. I did send an email today. I don't know if Dear and Faith were able to see that, but on the agenda, it says the date of the last meeting was October 25, and it should have been October 23 for those minutes, so I just wanted to make sure that that change was made.
That change will be noted.
Thank you.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 8B will consider approval of the Godley ISD campus improvement plans.
Good evening, board. This is the third viewing of the campus improvement plans. Last month, we brought them to you with the principals delineating the specific goals they were working on for the year, and then again, they're in line with the community-based accountability system. So you've heard again today some of the big ideas that they're working towards, so tonight we're just bringing them to you for the third review. We can answer any questions that you may have. Otherwise, it's our recommendation to approve the campus improvement plans as they are
I'll make a motion to approve the Godley ISD campus improvement plans as presented and recommended.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Marissa. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would just like to reiterate what I had mentioned at the last board meeting regarding the character and leadership development curriculum being approved by the committee and the administration and not being approved by the board. If you do read the TASB legal policy regarding changing curriculums, it does state that it has to be presented and voted on by the board, or if it is voted on and decided by any committee, then those meetings have to be open to the public and posted by Toma in accordance to Toma. I just want to make sure that that is going to be followed from here forward.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? No, good. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, board.
Next, we'll do 8C, consider amending District of Innovation Amendment regarding nicotine e-cigarettes.
This is the same as presented the past couple times, so this is our third look at this. We did take notes from the previous meeting, and we did make some changes just with regard to removing the asterisk and actually placing the possible DAP hearing under or next to each offense. And so that, and then additionally, there are other possible consequences, including removal from a club or maybe loss of parking privileges. So administrators, with any consequence for violation of the code of conduct, administrators do have that authority to be able to adjust as necessary based on circumstances. So we are still then asking for update to the District of Innovation Plan for flexibility regarding the mandatory DAP placement for e-cigarettes. So recommend adopting this as presented.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I noticed on the elementary consequences.
Yes, ma'am.
On the second offense, it said three days of OSS. What is OSS?
So ISS is in-school suspension, OSS is out-of-school suspension, so going home.
So actually at home?
Yes, ma'am.
And then my second question was, the thoughts that went into, just curious of the thoughts that went into, I noticed it says that basically we're treating a student possessing an actual cigarette containing nicotine differently than a student with an e-cigarette. What was the thoughts behind that?
Well, so the original, or if you go backwards a year, there was, well, sorry, moving forward to this year, we aligned those. And so making for, if it's a regular cigarette or if it's an electronic cigarette, we aligned those. And so we wanted to have that flexibility again to pull that back and then also bring then the regular cigarette back to the normal consequence rather than mandatory DAP.
So are you saying that the e-cigarette and the regular cigarette would be treated the same punishment-wise? Is that what you're telling me?
They currently are. Yes, ma'am.
And if we approve this, they would be treated the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
I would like to thank you for putting the possible DAP on the first offense as a possible consequence. I'm still going to stand with my thoughts that now is not the time to go easy on punishment for vapes, considering we have such a huge issue with that at the high school, but I would like to thank you for listening and putting the possible DAP on the consequences.
Any questions?
I have a question. Based on the legislation, it was initiated when the school year started, right, in September?
September 1.
So.
Yes, ma'am.
Starting September 1st, the first offense for a nicotine vape was DAP. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Have we seen an increase in the violations this year from last year?
Yes, ma'am.
And even though the students knew it was mandatory DAP on the first offense?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're still doing it?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions for Mr. Carnes? We'll entertain a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment to the District of Innovation amendment regarding nicotine e-cigarettes as presented and recommended.
Second.
A motion by Marissa, a second by Dennis. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 5 to 1. Thank you, Mr. Carnes. 8D, discussion and possible consideration for optional flexible school day program.
Ms. Swim is going to join me for this presentation. I'm going to do what we do best in education and that's throw another acronym at you, OFSDP. That's a mouthful. That stands for optional flexi, see, I can't even say it right, optional flexible school day program. What that means is that schools can apply for this through TEA as an opportunity to flex hours for students who are qualified as one of seven categories. For us in Godley, we're going to apply for the optional flexible school day with your approval under the TEC Code 29.081 for at-risk students and TEC Code 25.092 for minimum attendance. So what the optional flexible school day is, is just allows the schools to flex hours and days of attendance who meet those requirements. And then it's really an attempt to increase graduation rates and improve opportunities for students who are at risk of dropping out of school or who have dropped out of school to finish their high school graduation with us. It works by allowing seat time to count instead of having a mandatory attendance time. So right now for the high school, attendance is taken at 9 o'clock and if that student isn't in the seat at 9 o'clock, then they don't count for ADA funding for the school and counts towards truancy for them. This opportunity allows us to flex schedules for students to meet their individualized needs. And I'm going to let Ms. Swam talk about what some of those benefits to students are.
So after speaking with our students, and high school students are not morning people, unfortunately I am, so when I get there every day, I'm all happy and half of them are still trying to sleep. And we have conversations with our students every week. We could meet with them, we put them on growth plans, we talk to them, and I'm just finding out a lot of our students are working very late at night. Our students are working until 1 or 2 in the morning, closing places, and they try to go home and get a couple hours of sleep and then come to school. Where the flexible day would allow them to come in, not say having to be there, you know, by 9 o'clock for attendance, they could maybe stay the other day and come in from like 11:30 to 3:30 every day. We also have several students that are now working in the hospitality industry where they're working at home hotels in the morning and they're doing the laundry and they're trying to come in and do the laundry, then they come to school for four hours and they try to go back and finish that. It would allow just some flexibility in that and allow these students to get some more sleep and still account for their full day instead of having to come in and, you know, do their four hours before 12:15, they could stay right and come in maybe 11:30 to 3:30. I also think it's an awesome idea, looking forward into the future as we grow, that as our optional school day grows, having night classes and allowing us to open up that opportunity for some of our students that were unable to fulfill their graduation requirements before the age of 26 and perhaps in the future, looking at maybe opening.
So this is an intervention for us to potentially increase our attendance rates. Currently, the high school is sitting right at 94%, but when you pull linked students separate from high school students, the all-day linked students run about 93.2 and then the half-day linked students run at less than 87% in attendance. So this is in an attempt to flex those hours and create that individualized plan for students so that if they are working late or need different hours, that 9 o'clock attendance time doesn't penalize them because they have a job that keeps them up late at night. This application does require that we work with our PMS department to formulate a checks and balances for this system. So we currently have a system in place that works for students clocking in and clocking out, so we have an individualized tracking system for those students and their clock hours or their seat time that they would earn at Links Academy. And we've worked with PMS to make sure that everything that we're doing from a record-keeping side would be in compliance with the application. So we're good there and that would not cause any additional work on our Links staff, which is a bit bonus. This tonight is for information only. We'll bring this back to you next month for approval. Pending that approval, we would have to submit the application to TEA and then wait 30 days before we could actually start using this calendar with our students at Links. They also require that it starts the first of a six-week period. So if we can't start by the 30 days from the next board meeting at the beginning of the spring semester, January 10th, we'd have to wait till that first six-week period is over in February to start this with our students pending your approval, of course. So like I mentioned, this is for information tonight to introduce optional flexible school day program to you and to answer any questions and we'll bring this back next month for a vote. So we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can you confirm that this is limited to students?
Yes, this would only be available to students at Links and to qualify for this, they have to be at risk or in danger of not graduating due to a minimum attendance requirements.
Thank you.
Do we have the staff to be teaching night classes? How is that going to impact our staff?
That is absolutely something that's in the future, not something that we would start immediately, just in the vein of the flexibility that this provides to our students, that if we get to a spot where we have students that would need that as an additional flexible option, that we could have that conversation as a district and then at that point have a conversation about staffing. We don't foresee that being something that's in the next year or two or three even, but as the need for a non-traditional school day increases with our students, if we're really looking at individualizing an educational setting that meets their needs, that would be an option and a possibility with this as the way that we operate Links.
So back to the timing, if I understand correctly, if we evaluate this information, bring it to the next board, which is, my memory serves, middle of December, then that misses the opportunity to complete your paperwork, 30-day wait period, and then have that in time for the start on the 10th of January.
Correct. We would have to do it at the end of that first six weeks in, I think it's February, the middle of February-ish.
I'll make a motion to...
Unless you vote to approve it tonight, then we can start the 30-day period.
Well, I'm trying to get the wording for the proper motion. I make a motion to approve the optional flexible school day program as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Terry. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Was it, were you in?
I said in favor.
All right, thank you. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much, Board. We appreciate your support.
Next, 8E, we'll consider revisions to Godley ISD's board meeting regulations.
I have a couple of comments regarding this proposed policy. Godley ISD is currently one out of five districts in our region that currently limit public participation in our BE local policy to agenda items only. There are 72 districts that allow non-agenda items in their public comment. Godley City Council even welcomes public comment on non-agenda items. So we are already more restrictive than most in our public participation policy in our region. We cannot have a wall of honor, a memorial wall at our high school honoring veterans who served and sacrificed everything for our freedoms while passing a policy like this that severely limits those freedoms. The public has a First Amendment constitutional right to free speech to address their government, the school board, for a redress of grievances and/or complaints. A board meeting is the only avenue the public is able to ask questions and share concerns with the majority of the board members present. Wildcat Talks does not allow this. You also may not limit public comment to only residents who reside in district boundaries. As mentioned, almost half of our funding comes from state and federal sources. The Texas Open Meetings Act, in accordance with the Texas Government Code, Section 551.001, Section 4B4, states that members receive information from, give information to, ask questions of, or receive questions from any third person about the public business or public policy. Texas Government Code, Section 551.007, states that a governmental body shall allow each member of the public who desires to address the body regarding an item on an agenda for an open meeting at the meeting before or during the body's consideration of the item. 551.007 also states that in setting rules, a governmental body may not unfairly discriminate among speakers for or against any particular point of view and may not prohibit public criticism of the governmental body, including criticism of any act, omission, policy, procedure, program, or service. Furthermore, half of our funding comes from state revenue and not just local taxpayers. Therefore, any Texas citizen that pays property tax and sales tax is considered a stakeholder in this district. Additionally, since the district does not livestream its meetings, it is beneficial to members of the public when attendees livestream these meetings for those who have a hard time making it here by 6:00 PM. I am adamantly opposed to this policy and I believe it to be Orwellian. I hope the rest of the board stands with citizens and votes no.
Go ahead, Craig.
So when I read this policy update, there is nowhere in here where I interpret or read that it's limiting who can speak at a board meeting. Nowhere.
It says it does not...
It is still open for anyone to speak. It doesn't change who may speak at the board meeting. So I think there's some significant misinterpretation of the words that are in this policy.
It says it does not recognize those that do not live inside district boundaries.
That does not say that they may not speak at a board meeting. Those are two different things. It is speaking about the recognition of the stakeholders. It doesn't say they're not being recognized at a, pardon me, at a board meeting. And again, I'm going to emphasize, nowhere does it say that they may not speak at a board meeting. It is still being limited to the agenda items. That's not being changed based on what I saw in here. So I think there's significant misinterpretation.
And anyone will still be allowed to speak at a board meeting. Yes, sir, you are correct. And anyone will still be permitted to livestream at a board meeting. So there is some misunderstanding.
Also, the behavior policy in here is highly subjective and can be interpreted to prohibit public criticism per this policy.
We can now entertain a motion.
I'll make a move to a motion to consider the revisions to Godley ISD board meeting regulations.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Craig, a second by Dennis. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes 4 to 2. Next, 8F, it will be the first review of TASB policy update 122.
Could I make a comment?
You have the floor.
I think that the gray area that is being referred to is exactly what's happening. There's no need in that. There's no need in those comments outside of our decisions. You had your time, that's your time to speak. That's exactly why these kind of policies come into place, because of those things. I'm not asking. I'm not asking. I'm pointing out factual information of exactly why. I'm not asking. I'm not asking. I'm not going to entertain this, I'm not going to argue with you. I'm just pointing out a fact. That is a fact.
Ma'am, you're interrupting a public meeting now. That's one warning. That's one warning for interruption of a public meeting. The last thing I want to do is remove you from this meeting. You've received one warning. Thank you. Next, we'll move to 8F, which is the first review of TASB policy update 122.
I have a question. Are we required to approve the update to this TASB legal or can we keep our TASB legal policies as they stand?
Are you asking legal or local? Go ahead.
Yeah, so policy update 122, it came in over the Thanksgiving break, so it was provided to you all. I've had a chance to look at it today, so this really is just a 30,000-foot overview, first presentation of this and to put it into your hands. There are two different types of policies. There's legal and local. Legal, our hands are tied. The legal policies are, they're not voted on by the board, only the local policies are voted on and approved by the board. So by my count, there are seven local policies included in this update, and so really tonight, more than anything, we just wanted to get that in your hands. You have, you've been provided the explanatory notes, which include the legal and the local policies. So the local policies, and we will come back next month for further discussion and presentation of these, like I said, we just wanted to get them into your hands. But EHB regarding complying with the State Board of Education implementing a program to test students for dyslexia, there was a House Bill 4545, which was accelerated instruction for students that did not pass STAR. That has been updated into House Bill 1416, new numbers for us, and so accelerated instruction for students that did not pass STAR. So that's House Bill 1416. EIC deals with class ranking, so we'll have to look at that and have conversation around that. There is also one around compulsory attendance. Students will have, I think, two days as a junior and two days as a senior to go look at companies or career decisions that they may be looking at, so they'll have some opportunity there and then we, so those... And then we, so those two days would not count against them for attendance. FFAC, there's for medical treatment for opioids and for respiratory distress medication. Crisis intervention and procedures for students to report concerns about other students. And then lastly, student records related to House Bill 1416, and just changing some language. So the local policies don't appear to be too terribly, too terribly many or too complicated, but there are numerous legal policies in there that have been updated as well. So we'll bring this back to you, really, for presentation and discussion in December.
We have an opportunity then, in December, to provide our comments on these policies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, thank you for the process by which you provide this at multiple meetings and also opportunity to review. I am going to be very interested in the implementation of the policy changes for, obviously, how it affects our kids. So again, look for that early in December so we can have adequate time to review.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to 8G, which is discussion and possible consideration to approve a change order for Phase 2.
Okay, we've got Aubrey Slatko and Nick from S&amp;P to talk to us a little bit about change order and escalation. And Aubrey has a lot of numbers to pass out to you.
All right, good evening. So tonight, we wanted to have a tag team a little bit and give you all an update on Phase 2 of Godly High School, the construction progress, and look financially at it and consider a request for a change order. We're not asking for any action tonight, just discussion, and we'll be back next month if you all do decide to move forward with this. There's a couple of different aspects we want to look at tonight, so I'm just going to kind of walk you through a few different steps here. Nick is going to come share some similar impacts that S&amp;P is facing on their side of the contract, and then I'll kind of come back and wrap up what the request actually is of you all. So I wanted to start with just the summary of where we are on the project. You'll see the handout in front of you, the first sheet, should be kind of a purple set of numbers and then a green set of numbers on that page. That first section looks at all of the contingency expenditures in owner's contingency. We have talked some about this in previous meetings, specifically conformance set changes and JSU-related issues that have resulted in a previous change order. In addition to those items on this list, you'll see owner-generated changes that come in the form of an RFP, which is a request for pricing. It's just an industry term. And then there's some other types of owner-generated requests. There's some document coordination issues where maybe there was a conflict in our documents or something that needed to be addressed, and you see dollar values to all of the impacts of those. And then there's always unforeseen items in construction that we just can't predict. Like, there was a utility line deeper than we knew, so they had to do a little more excavation or a little more demolition. There was a crushed pipe underneath something that had, you know, once it was uncovered, had to be replaced. So that is a very typical thing for construction on an existing site. So collectively, you can see that we've approved and pending, I should also mention, these are not all approved items, but approved and pending in our current log, just over $3 million in owner's contingency expenses. I want to point out that 85% of that value is betterment to the project. So whether it be the RFPs for making some design changes to the project that will benefit the students, or the project, the projects, stuff like conformance set changes and JSU changes that just came after the original documents were issued, they're all betterment to the project. And so I feel positive about that percentage in this value. And so that's, like I said, just over 3 million in expenditures. The next section shows the available funds in owner's contingency. And you'll see the percentages there related to that, the base bid contract, and then the previous change orders, the percentages that went towards contingency. That was a total of 3.18%, and a total of 2.5 million roughly as far as owner's contingency funds. So if everything that is currently pending were approved, you would be at a deficit in owner's contingency by almost $500,000. So a couple of comments that I want to make towards that. The next couple of line items you'll see there. If we had done an industry standard owner's contingency rate of 4%, that would be 3.2 million. We would be covered on all of these expenses. If you recall, it's been nearly two years ago when this project was initially awarded, there were budget challenges just with the inflation and all of that. And so we were trying to tighten reins as much as we could. And so we did go with lesser value of owner's contingency and construction contingency to try to get this project as close to budget as we could. And so part of the reason that we are facing that deficit is we did go less than the industry standard value in owner's contingency at the start of the project. And then, secondly, like we said, with the conformance set, doing the early bid set, there wasn't a contingency allocated for those types of changes that came along the way. So the second section in green are additional costs that the owner has the ability to spend throughout a project.
Ms. Aubrey, do you want questions about the purple section now, or do you want them later?
I can take them now, that's fine.
Okay. Can you, if you explain the, about halfway down, the potential damage area? Did you explain that, and I miss it?
Okay, no, I did skip over that. I have another piece on the next page, but I can speak to that. Potential damage is around $150,000. We think that you all, as the owner, should only pay for things once. So if one of our document coordination issues causes some work to be redone, for example, like I know we've got some tile that Nikki would like replaced, Huckabee will pay for that. And so you see that here as an expense, as potential damage of $150,000, but you will see on the next page a fee credit from Huckabee for those items. And that's one example, but there's a handful of items that we will be contributing on so that you are only getting, you're getting full value of what you're paying for. Okay, so that's owner's contingency. The next section in green is owner's allowances. And these are items that we don't necessarily have specific bids on when a project is put out to bid. Like graphics, for example, usually come through design later. There's electrical service provider allowances and things like that that we just don't know until the project really gets under construction. And so the balances that you see here are what's remaining in all of those allowances. And you see a surplus of $594,000 there towards the bottom of the page. And then I've called out a specific allowance related to material escalation for $450,000. This was an allowance that was added in Change Order 1 to help support the material escalation that we were seeing when, at the time, Change Order 1 was awarded. And so Nick is going to speak a little bit more to that, as well as S&amp;P's side of that. But if that allowance does go towards material escalation as intended, then your remaining allowance balance is $143,000. So those two items combined put you at a roughly $350,000 deficit moving forward. But before I go into the rest of the numbers, I want to give Nick a few minutes to speak specifically about the material escalation, how this feeds into it, and then I'll continue to just kind of work towards the change order request and put all the pieces together for you.
Thank you, Aubrey. Thank you, Board. I just want to provide a little bit more context to the, of the request for the use of the contingency allowance for escalation that was added in Change Order 1. And at the beginning of this project, the decision was made to move forward with the project with a set of documents that were issued for bidding and for permitting, but not for construction. So in January of '22, we priced that set. We turned in a price. It was submitted to the board and approved in March of '22. And then the conformance set, which is the for-construction set of documents, was issued in late March, effectively priced by us in May. So the period between January, the bid set, and the conformance set, and the JSU changes, which you guys are familiar with, that period of time in the construction cost index in Dallas increased by around 6%. So the impact to the project, had we waited for that period until the conformance set was issued, would have seen on the contract value roughly a $4 million increase. So we all moved forward. Okay, so the significant benefit was gained by Godly, the school district. However, with the market volatility at the time, coupled with subcontractors that we relied on at the time of GMP going out of business or defaulting entirely, we, S&amp;P was hit with about $2 million worth of increased construction cost. And there is a construction contingency that was set for part of that, it's roughly $1 million. And then with the additional $450 allowance used for escalation, that would leave a deficit of around $550,000, which S&amp;P is ready and willing to take that hit as the CMA risk contractor for the district. So in addition to that, our GMP amendment, which is our final contracting document, it was issued and fully executed to us in July of '22. In the period between May of the conformance set and July, we saw another 3.5% increase in escalation in the market. And in an attempt to limit the exposure to ourselves in the district, S&amp;P went and contracted with subcontractors around $25 million and committed contracts to those subcontractors to secure the vendor pricing before we had an executed agreement from the district. So in addition to that, at the period of time in March of '22, when the district voted and approved the GMP amendment, a notice to proceed was issued to S&amp;P, which we used to proceed seemingly somewhat at risk for the $25 million of contracts that we executed, as well as began the clock on the original contract duration. So we just want to make a comment there that had the notice to proceed be given at the time of the executed GMP, the completion dates for both the CTE or the WILD would be at the end of March and the ARENA at the end of June. So the construction process and the process that was used to administer this project, I fully support and agree, was the best interest of the district. We were left a little bit exposed, and for, that is why we're asking for the benefit or the use of the escalation contingency.
Any questions on that piece, or you want me to work towards the end and see what questions remain? Keep going? Okay. Okay, so again, Nick was talking about material escalation being around 6% for the project as a whole. And what is being asked for you all is that this material escalation that was included in Change Order 1 of $450,000 be allocated towards the project as a whole and not just Change Order Number 1. And you're being asked to take that, to include that $450,000 in material escalation overage, whereas S&amp;P is covering still more than a million beyond that of additional material escalation overage. So just wanting to be clear that it's a shared burden here with the overall state of the project and all of the inflation that happened during that period of time that Nick talked about. So I'm going to move on to the second page of numbers. Looking at, again, owner's contingency funds, if everything that is pending is approved, and that we look at transferring the remaining allowance balances to owner's contingency, you would be at a deficit of roughly $350,000. Looking at what we need to get to the finish line on this project, we would need to replenish contingency at that value of around $350,000. There's also additional RFPs being considered right now that are being priced, valued at over $600,000. You can see that list on the following page. And that includes some hospitality, food service equipment being the largest one, some fencing required by the new TEA rules that were not in place when this project started, and a few other smaller items there as well. There's also some upcoming non-RFP-related items that we know will have an impact to the project, and that is primarily having to repair the curb around portions of the track. That's just one of those things that was discovered as those contractors began their work, and so we've allocated some money towards that as well. And then what we would recommend, just to have some cushion from here to the end of the project, is have a 1% contingency to cover any unforeseen items of the unbilled value of the project. So that's an additional $260,000. So this would really be for unforeseens only. We're not anticipating issuing any more betterment-type changes through RFPs. If there are any additional RFPs that come, this might not get us there, but we're not anticipating anything at this time. So when you look at all of that collectively and add the contractors' bonds and insurance and fee to that, we're requesting a $1.35 million change order. I know that that is a difficult ask, especially when we've already done a change order to replenish contingency based on conformance set and JSU challenges that the project has faced. But I do want to look at this next section that shows that there are funds available to cover this within the bond. This is similar to information that was relayed to you when we looked at the first change order. And we're looking at approximately $450,000 surplus in the bond as a whole, plus approximately a million-dollar surplus in the FFNE budget, the furniture and equipment budget for this project. And this is where I've included our fee credit from Huckabee as well to reimburse you for a few of those items. And so that gives you a balance of $1.6 million in bond funds available. So even after this change order, if it were approved, you would have a balance of almost $250,000 remaining in the 2021 bond. And just to reiterate a couple of points, as Nick was saying, here in the bottom section of Page 2, if we had waited to bid this project until documents were fully complete, we issued those documents at the March 30th, I believe, and so they would have bidded around the 1st of May. And so from the time that we actually bidded in mid-January to when it could have been bid in May, at the 6% rate is a $4 million impact on the project. And so by bidding it early, we did save the project $4 million. We know that there was $993,000 in conformance set changes of things that came between the bid set and the final document set, but that's still a savings of $3 million to the project, and that has allowed you to do all of the betterment toward the project that you have. Had we waited until May, we would not have had the funds to put all of these things into the project that will serve these students. the project that will serve these students better as we move forward. So while this is a difficult ask, I do just want to just reiterate that we do feel like we have made the wisest decisions that we could from a timing standpoint to get the best bang for our buck and to get the project moving as soon as we could. So I know that is a lot of information. I'll just point out the additional documents that you have, but I won't go through them. Like I said, the following page is the list of pending RFPs, and behind that is the list of pending items that are not yet approved. And a number of those items on that list are items that Huckabee is participating partially or fully in. Okay.
So another question for you in the orangish section where there's two hundred and sixty K that would be allocated for unforeseen items. Just question for clarification, that would remain in the owner contingency?
Correct. And if it's not spent, it would go back to you at the end of the project.
All right. Thank you. And I guess I just see the early bidding as cost avoidance versus truly savings.
Yes, fair point.
Not that it makes that much difference, but still, cost avoidance is a big deal.
Yes.
Thank you.
Dr. Nix, do you want to say anything about the culinary arts equipment? That's a big chunk.
So when Aubrey speaks to the betterment of the facility, I feel like I'm a little bit responsible for some of that. So a part of that is culinary arts. It originally had an alternate bid that was not accepted to actually put the equipment into the industrial kitchen space. This culinary purchase would put all of that equipment in that space so that when we're ready to launch a culinary arts program and hire an FTE or a teacher for that, the space will be ready for us to do that. It would also be a great partnership with our booster clubs in supporting them in our hospitality spaces for all of the events that happen at the WILD. It's a great way for us to launch a restaurant internally for our staff to patron or to open to the public. It's a great partnership opportunity for us to invite the Chamber of Commerce to have a meeting at the WILD and for our students to cater that meal, or for us to have a culinary program that would cater board meetings. So having that equipment purchase as a part of this would be a huge leg up as far as starting that program as as a growth program as we continue to add students. Some of the other pieces that we used as as part of that betterment of the building were shifting a traditional classroom into a print shop maker space for our school store. So the ability to run a true entrepreneurial experience in that space was an increased cost there. We added a lab for our education and training, our grow your own program, so that they have a mimic of a third grade classroom. So instead of just learning in a traditional classroom, they have that space, but they now also have an elementary lab space that has all of the furniture from Pleasant View, all the manipulatives from a from a third grade classroom, so that they have that same environment to live and breathe in like they do in a classroom. We shifted some stuff on the fourth floor for audio video and for line of sight between the TV studio and classroom. So a lot of those things, it's hard to kind of understand what betterment of the project is. So I wanted to kind of give you an idea of what that meant as far as creating instructional spaces that were more efficient for our teachers and were more impactful for our students in those programs specifically.
Any other questions for these two? Okay. Thank you, guys, very much.
Next, eight H will consider approving the resolution of official ballot for Johnson County Board of Directors appointment beginning January one, twenty twenty-four. Terry had a had a great idea of dividing up our allotted votes evenly between board members. Each member can cast their votes for who they want. I personally think this is a great idea. It allows every board member's vote to be heard. For instance, an example of that, Johnson County, Godley ISD has allotted two hundred and twenty-nine votes. We have six board members present tonight, so each board member would get thirty-eight point two votes. Would there be any objections to this process?
I would like to recommend that we give our two hundred and twenty-nine votes to Mr. Dwayne Golding to help secure him a spot on the CAD board.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I would like to make a motion to give Mr. Dwayne Golding our two hundred and twenty-nine votes for the Johnson County Board of Directors. I will second that.
I have a motion by Kayla, a second by Marissa, to give Dwayne Golding two hundred and twenty-nine votes. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Point of order here. I believe you were describing a process that was not fully understood before a motion was made. Can we go back to the process, or do we need to continue to vote on this without fully understanding the process as you were outlining?
We have a motion and a second on the floor. It needs to be voted on. We can discuss it at this time. Is there any further discussion on the process presented?
Yeah, I was wanting to vote for some people that I am familiar with that serve currently on the Johnson County Board, so I will not be in for in favor of that motion.
My recommendation for Mr. Dwayne Golding is to allow another citizen on the CAD board to help with transparency in the taxing process and also to shed light on the way that the CAD board operates. As it is right now, it's rather secretive, and allowing Mr. Dwayne Golding an opportunity to sit on that CAD board would help our process for that CAD board and for appraisals to be more transparent, which would help the board when they're trying to process and get future bonds passed. There is issues with transparency and voters having a lack of trust in that process, and allowing Mr. Golding on that CAD board would honestly help you guys pass future bonds.
My question regarding the process was really more around, I believe, with the thirty-eight point two votes per was based on all seven of board members being here, and I believe we only have six here. So is that calculated on based on six or seven?
Is there any further discussion? We'll now take a vote on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? The vote is tied, three to three. Motion dies for lack of passing. So now we'll go back to another idea that was presented. Are there any objections to each member having thirty-eight point two votes per person?
Do I need to make a motion for that?
You.
No.
No, we don't need a motion. We just. Are there any objections?
Yes, I would object to that. And I also have a question. Would that not be with us not having seven members, we wouldn't each have thirty-eight point two, correct? Oh, okay. Okay.
Yeah, two twenty-nine divided by six.
I didn't have my calculator.
Actually comes out to thirty-eight point one, six, 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 seven, which is thirty-eight point two.
Okay.
Ms. Lane, would you like to make a recommendation on how we proceed with the vote?
Yes, my recommendation would be to honor what the taxpayers are trying to get past this legislative session, which is to have citizens on the CAD board. This is the first time that this has been done, and we have had the support of other cities and other ISDs to elect two of those members onto the CAD board. And so y'all's cooperation in this would allow you to be part of that movement to get transparency on that CAD board and be part of those in Johnson County who have already voted and approved two of those members. Mr. Dwayne Golding, our two hundred and twenty-nine votes would almost secure him a seat on that CAD board, and that would be another citizen that would represent the taxpayers on that board.
Is there any other discussion or ideas or motions?
I'm curious of Terry's additional, if she has additional information on people that are currently on the board, because I didn't see any campaigning or information out there, so I'd love to know what you know about them, just out of curiosity.
I know Brenda Webb is a very Christian outstanding person in Cleveland.
And she was the one I did find.
She's a relator, and she would be very familiar with property values. Toby Ford I also have known for years, having grown up in Burleson. Know his family well. He's a very fine, upstanding person. And Don Beeson as well. So those were who I was going to put my votes towards.
Yeah. You can make a motion. Yeah.
Well, I'm not for I'm not for all the votes going to one person. So, yeah.
What was your reasoning, Terry, for presenting that idea in the first place? Split everybody's vote up, thirty-eight point two per member?
I mean, it's a democracy. We should all have an opportunity to vote who we want to.
I agree. I agree with that. I mean, it allows each board member's votes to to be tallied, and we would could make the motion off of that, how the how it's added up. I don't believe it's saying anyone person, per se, is not going to get the votes that were cast for them. I think it's just going to be how the votes are split up. Those votes can still be cast for that person, correct? In that what you're presenting?
I would like for the votes to at least be read to the public and transparent to the public in the way that each board member voted and cast their votes for those members.
Does anyone object to that? So the proposal would be to for each member to have thirty-eight point two votes and for those votes to be read aloud how they were presented, and then we will make a motion based off of the tally from those votes. Is that, am I understanding that right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any objections to that process? All right, does everyone?
Can I make a statement just real quick for clarity of all the board members?
Sure.
I just want to be sure that everyone understands, because there's a lot of names there in front of you, and I know we heard a lot of people speak tonight, so I just want to be sure that everybody understands that Amy Lingo is already on the board and John Wood is already on the board, and those are the other two citizens that were campaigning. So the two other citizens that still are are looking for votes are Dwayne Golding and Paul Jones.
Correct.
Thank you. Does everybody have a worksheet in front of them? All right, we can cast your votes now, and then we'll tally them up, and then we'll take us. We'll tally the votes, and then we'll check the math by another person, check it twice.
We just get one for Tarrant County, right? So we have to agree.
That's correct.
On Tarrant County, in speaking with Mr. Craig Hundley, the citizen that has been campaigning is Gary Losada. It'd be my recommendation to give him the one vote.
Okay, when we get to eight J, we only have the one vote, so we can make a motion for whichever member.
Is that correct?
That's correct, and then we'll have another person verify the math.
Okay.
That would be three point six seven per board member that is present tonight. That would be 3.67 per board member that is present tonight. Craig, you'll verify the math, please. Okay, we'll read them off individually at first. Matt McKittrick, 15 votes for Don Beeson, 15 for Toby Ford, 8.2 Brenda Webb. Dennis McFarland, 19.1 for Dwayne Golding, 19.1 for Paul Jones. Craig Stevenson, 18.2 for Toby Ford, 20 for Brenda Webb. Marissa Abbott, 38.2 for Dwayne Golding. Terry Goodlow, 12.73 for Don Beeson, 12.73 for Toby Ford, 12.73 for Brenda Webb. Kayla Lane, 38.2 for Dwayne Golding. That brings the totals to 27.73 for Don Beeson, 45.93 for Toby Ford, 95.3 for Dwayne Golding, 19.1 for Paul Jones, 40.93 for Brenda Webb. And I'll entertain a motion now.
Before a motion is made, I just wanted to thank Dennis McFarland and Marissa Abbott for their votes to elect citizens to the CAD board.
For motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the votes as tallied and listed.
I'll second.
A motion by Terri, a second by Marissa. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes five to one. Next, 8I, consider approving resolution of official ballot for Hood County Board of Directors, appointment beginning January 1, 2024. District has 22 votes, each trustee has 3.67. Matt McKittrick, 2 votes. Rick Frye, 1.67 votes for Eddie Rodriguez. Dennis McFarland, 3.67 votes for Rick Frye. Craig Stevenson, 2 votes for Rick Frye, 1.67 for Eddie Rodriguez. Marissa Abbott, 3.67 votes for Greg Harrell. Terry Goodlow, 3.67 votes for Rick Frye. Kayla Lane, 3.67 votes for Scott Bradley. That brings the totals to 3.67 for Scott Bradley, 11.34 for Rick Frye, 3.67 for Greg Harrell, 3.34 for Eddie Rodriguez. I'll entertain a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve the ballots as counted and presented.
A motion by Craig, a second by Dennis. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. 8J will consider approving resolution of official ballot for Tarrant County Board of Directors, appointment beginning January 1, 2024. We only have one vote for Tarrant County. I'll open the floor for nominations for who to vote on.
I make a motion to give our one vote to Citizen Gary Losada for Tarrant County CAD Board.
I'll second. I'll second.
A motion by Kayla, a second by Craig, to cast one vote for Gary Losada. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously. The time is now 8:43 PM. The board will move into closed session. Present to the following sections, 551.072, discussion of purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property, and 551.076, considering the deployment specific occasions All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously.
I'll motion to adjourn.
A motion by Terry, a second by Marissa, to adjourn at 9:02 PM. Are there any objections? Being done, we will stand adjourned.